We're having some technology issues because of, I know we've got Zoom, but I, nobody here in the chambers besides our meeting hosts will be hooked up to, to the Zoom. So I'm going to rely on a little bit of help if I need to, call on anybody online. So, welcome, 6:07 on June 3rd. Welcome to our first city council meeting of the month. We're going to start tonight with the invocation given by Mayor Pretend Cargill, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
Father Ruth, thank you for the opportunity to come together as a community tonight to do the business of the city and to work together as we can on various issues that are impacting the city. We ask for your blessing on this meeting tonight so that we can come together and, and get business of the city complete and find the community spirit to do so as well. We ask for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, and all the meeting to order here at 6:08. Do a quick roll call. Councilmember Van Orman, Councilmember Ball, Mayor Pretend Cargill, Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right, I know Councilmember Kurtz is at a school event. Her daughter is being inducted to Honor Society, so may I have a motion for excusal?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of excusing Councilmember Kurtz, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. All right, we are up to agenda approval. Does anybody have any proposed amendments? Councilmember Ball.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove 9E from the consent agenda and make it, I guess it would be like 10B in general.
Okay, so you'd like to move, not, so move 9E to 10B?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor of moving item 9E to 10B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Any other proposed amendments? All right?
Seeing none, Mayor, I move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. We have an agenda. So, we are quickly on citizen comments. So for those of you who are here in the audience, if you have a comment to make, we've got these yellow half sheets over by the wall. If you could fill one out and get it to Rochelle at the end of the table over here, she'll get it to me. If there's anybody online, please send a note to our meeting host in chat and he will let me know. Just a reminder of our rules of engagement, timeline of three minutes. We just ask you to keep the, the comments respectful and it can be any topic and, oh, and a reminder that's just a comment period. We don't, there should be no back and forth with the council. If we had the follow-up, we'll make sure we have your contact information. That being said, first we have Petra Hoy. Welcome.
It's actually a combo effort. We had to fill out separate sheets, but we only needed a total of three.
Okay.
Okay, so I am Ketch Schmidt. I live in Liberty Lake.
I'm Petra Hoy, in the county.
Okay, and we're out, we're up here tonight because we wanted to give a quick thank you to the Liberty Lake Police Department. I see Mr. Darren, Mr. Deputy Chief in the hallway there.
Come on in. His face is all red.
Yep, we're doing a First Amendment protest called Tesla Tuesday. And we've been doing it for 18 weeks in a row. And we are out on the corner of Mission. And there's a lot of cars zooming by. There's a lot of things going on out there. And I have been in communication with the chief and deputy chief. And we really appreciated.
Okay, we've really appreciated their efforts in helping keep us safe. So we, actually, if anybody's here from Tesla Tuesday, just quick raise a hand. There's quite a few of us here tonight. We just wanted to show up to say thanks. But we signed some cards and then we got you guys some baked goods.
So, after, have they any trouble with them?
The guy won't have any trouble with them.
Yeah, right. This is a token of our appreciation. So thank you very much. And just thank you, everybody who's been showing up. It's been a great community building event. And like I said, it's been going on for 18 weeks. And there's so many people that we met and made contacts with. So it's been a great event. Thank you so much. We're going to hold you to tax there, Deputy Chief. We're going to make sure you get those to the PD. They are not for Hunter's graduation party.
Quick, I'd just like to thank all of the did do the Tesla demonstration that were very calm and didn't have any issues with any of you out there. So we appreciate it from the law enforcement side of the house as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Craig Phobes. Welcome. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Craig Phobes, Liberty Lake resident. Just add my thanks to those that were just given to the police department. I mostly want to offer a perspective on your Winter Glow decision-making. And that is that you're not being called, excuse me, called upon to make one big, huge decision. You're going to be making a series of incremental decisions over the course of time. And what's immediately before you is just a $25,000 decision on purchasing the display assets. And then more difficult to quantify reallocation of a little bit of staff time to begin the process of trying to leverage community support, community donations, community volunteers. But you're not called upon tonight to make a decision that you're doing Winter Glow for five years or spending half a million dollars to do it or whatnot. You have a very narrow decision in front of you. And having attended the town hall last night, I would encourage you to make the $25,000 expenditure. You'll see whether things are viable over the next few months. And if they're not, you can turn around and try to sell those display assets. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, Rochelle, do we have anybody who had comments online that you need to read? No? Okay, do we have anybody online?
Yes, we have Tom Saul.
All right, Tom Saulberg, welcome. Can't hear you yet.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Thank you. Neighbor, staff and electeds, Tom Saulberg. As with many of you, I've been following the goings-on about the future of Winter Glow, which I've been a part of since August 21st of 2019, when it was first brought to the Parks and Art Commission, of which I was a member at the time. Then followed by a series of meetings and ended with the city council approving a $10,000 donation on October 15th of 2019, just two months before the first grand opening on November 23rd, 2019. That's the history. I also attended last night's town hall and have spoken with and listened to city staff, several community members and Winter Glow staff. As with others here, I have had my entire family involved in every Winter Glow, donating hundreds of hours of time during setup, take-down, repair, door-belling, neighbors and security of the Winter Glow site. We have also donated to, sponsored and supported Winter Glow financially. I've made countless friends during this time, including most of the original Winter Glow board members and Liberty Lake members who have always willingly donated their time, energy and money to bring this event to our community. Those who have been here for every single one of the six years include Marcia Binder, Bender, Mark Sabah, Dan and Julie Chase, Lenny Clark and others. In my seven years with Winter Glow that describe Rich Riley's treatment of city staff, volunteers and the amount of money we've contributed can be summed up in two words: never enough. I do support our staff's recommendation not to spend the $25,000 to purchase the displays, lights, trailers, et cetera. Winter Glow has decided to move on. And by the way, this will be the fifth time in 11 to 12 years that Rich and Winter Glow have left a location. Liberty Lake more than hosted this event. We embraced and supported Winter Glow with thousands of hours of volunteer time, tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of hours of staff time. And along with Winter Glow, the use of land for trailers and fencing that violates our own code for temporary storage. Regardless of whether the city council decides to, one, pay the $25,000 for the inventory and trailers, or two, decides to start fresh renaming and continuing the event that so many enjoy, we should immediately build the storage facility that's been budgeted for the last two years. But I beg you, please don't throw any more money away. Winter Glow wants to leave, let them go. Finally, whatever the city council decides, you can count on me, my time, energy and financial support to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well timed. Okay, do we have anybody else? Nope. Okay, just a reminder, we will have another opportunity for citizen comment at the end of the meeting. All right, we are up to announcements, proclamations and special presentations. Tonight we have the program profile on long-range planning. Welcome, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'll give it a second while Evan pulls up the program. Tonight we're going to talk about long-range planning as a program profile. Next slide, please. So, long-range planning is obviously within the Community Development Department, but it involves much more than community development. It is very integrated in how we approach it. It includes comprehensive plan development, which we are in the throes of, as well as the comp plan administration, policy development and code administration and interpretation, transportation planning, capital facilities planning, and a host of other master planning and strategic planning types of efforts. So, right now, our key focus is on the comp plan. Resources, it, it takes full-time equivalents, 2.23, full-time equivalent positions to deliver this. Personnel costs are $327,000 and change. And non-personnel costs are almost $400,000 for a total cost of $721,000 in the year. Basic program attributes, the demand for the program is increasing. So, less than 50% of the, or, I'm sorry, greater than 50% of the population is benefited. It is state mandated and we do have a 50% plus cost recovery. Again, some programs, we have almost complete cost recovery, comp plan amendments being an example, development code amendments that are privately initiated are an example. We are getting a total of $625,000 from the state over the course of two years to deliver our comp plan. It's not nearly what it costs to deliver it, but, but it's, but it certainly defrays the cost. The city could contract for the service, but what's a consultant? He's the guy who steals your watch so he can tell you what time it is. Next slide, please. So, strategic plan alignment. Public safety and well-being is strong. We have, we do have very much a resiliency component. We are very much involved with hazard planning for the city. Quality of life and connectedness is strong. Again, our efforts to really engage the citizenry in the process, I think, really helped to build that. Economic vibrancy and opportunity, again, is strong. Plan growth and infrastructure, obviously, it's extreme. This is one of our most aligned project, or programs within the strategic plan alignment category. Next slide, please. The results that we're looking for, so, big part of the process is the planning process includes input from a representative cross-section of stakeholders. And how we measure that, number of distinct engagement opportunities, venues and forums offered to engage the community in the development of whatever plan it is that we're working on. And also, a second measure is the number of discrete participants engaged throughout the plan development and adoption process. We have a pretty robust spreadsheet going with our, with our public engagement efforts, with the comp plan, with the parks plan, et cetera, with all the different sub-plans that are feeding into this. And it's pretty impressive how much contact we've already had with the public. And we're just getting ramped up right now. Next slide, please. The other result that we're really looking at is that our adopted plans facilitate growth and, and change to meet projected future needs. And two key measures for this, that the plan receives approval or concurrence from the relevant regulatory authority, whether that's our transportation plans with SRTC, the comp plan with Commerce, et cetera. The other, and, and more internally focused, is that the city consistently meets the established level of service standards or has planned funded improvements, or has planned and funded improvements necessary to achieve the planned level of service within our six-year capital facilities plan. Again, that is really the core, and that's what the capital facilities, why we have a six-year capital facilities plan, is trying to connect where we're investing our money with our meeting our level of service standards. And obviously, that's going to be a lot of the discussion coming up this fall and into next year is going to be what are the different level of service standards for parks, for transportation, for PD and, and others. So, so again, it's a really critical part of the capital facilities planning process. And that's, that's the program profile in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Any questions, comments? No?
So, Evan, if you can go back just a couple of slides, I want to point a couple of things out and then give the council a kind of a preview of what's coming next. One more. So, just if you look on the basic program attributes, a table on the right there, we've made a slight change to the scoring of our programs. Whereas in the past, from a cost recovery perspective, they either recovered a dollar up to full recovery and that was a yes, or they recovered no money and that was a no. And so we've changed the scoring to make it a little bit more sensible. So now we have some recovery, more recovery and most recovery. So we have three categories of recovery that help just better differentiate those programs that are actually recovering a substantial amount through some kind of revenue collection versus those that are collecting a very little amount. And so that makes a slight difference in scoring. It probably will not be the difference in something being most aligned versus least aligned or anything like that. But I just wanted to point that out because in the past, it's only been a yes-no answer. The other thing that I wanted to give council a preview on is we've now brought a half dozen or so profiles before you. So, at the next meeting, we're going to take a break from that and we're going to bring to you the ones that we have presented through the profiles and summarize all of the results and measures. So you can see how then we're going to track those over time and report them out so that from an accountability perspective, we, we have that piece in place so that not only the council and the staff, but also the public is able to see the, the, the measures that are leading to those results that we've been talking about, which is the return on the investment component that we've, that we've used as a, as a kind of measure of success of this whole program. So that will be at the next council meeting. And then we'll make a decision and I welcome your feedback on whether we want to continue doing a program, a meeting, or if we want to change cadence, if we want to stop it altogether. And we'll have a chance to talk about that at the next meeting. So, look forward to that. Any other questions about the profiles? All right, thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa. All right, next up, reports and inquiries. We'll start first with city council. Anybody have any reports? Councilmember Ball.
Well, I have several things. So, seems like forever ago, but the day after our last meeting, I attended the ribbon cutting of the Liberty Lake, the county park where the beach and whatnot is. And very impressive. It was like night and day. I mean, the dock doesn't look like it's going to sink. It has a really cool way for disabled people to launch their kayaks or whatever from the dock, nice restrooms, picnic areas. It's really nice. And then if you take a little drive up that little road, there's cabins too that they built. There's like five of them, I think. Darling. And there was a guy fishing on the dock. I got talking to him and he was staying in one of the cabins and very impressed. So, anyway, I just thought that was really, really cool. Then last week, I went to the Visit Spokane presentation and whatnot in Spokane. And it was, Rose gave the, most of the presentation, Rose Noble. And it was mostly what she presented to us a few weeks ago. But something piqued my interest and I have not been able to get ahold of her because she's out of town, but I talked to her assistant today. But I'm pretty sure it was Mayor Brown from Spokane mentioned the Tourism and Cultural Investment Grant Program and how wonderful that had been, et cetera, et cetera. So I wanted to know, I'm curious if we've ever been the benefactor of such a grant? Anybody know?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd kind of like to talk to Rose when she gets back and see what this is about and I'll, I'll report back. But, I mean, if we could get a grant for whatever it could help towards, since we're talking about it tonight, Winter Glow or what have you. I mean, so anyway, it's just something I think is worth exploring. One more thing, farmer's market. So I was there again this Saturday and it was a little warm, a little busier when I got there. But it really cools down about noon. I mean, people start really fading away. But what I would like to say here is that I've been there the last three weekends on the second shift because I'm not a big morning person. And, you know, I've enjoyed it, but I, we've had a lot of participation from Lisa and the crew and CEC people, but not y'all, okay? And I'm not being judgmental, but I can't do it this coming Saturday or the next one because I have stuff. So I, I'm just suggesting that, you know, it's fun, guys. Get in there and you talk to people, you learn things. Wow, I didn't know that. Or, you know, love to see where their house is on the map, what's going there, what happened to Costco. It's kind of the same thing. But, you know, you guys, seriously, sign up. You know, we, we got to make an effort here. So, that is my report. I've been out and about.
All right, sounds good. Anybody other council reports? Councilmember Dunn.
Spokane Transit Authority is having an open house on Friday to Division Street BRT. This is a Bus Rapid Transit project for the North-South Division Corridor. It originally was intended to be tied to the opening of the North-South Corridor, the freeway. But as the state's schedules have slid, what they're trying to do now is phase in potential openings of the Division BRT, even though the freeway is not yet open. So, the open house is to discuss alternatives and different phasing concepts to the nature of it. So, other than that, interviews have taken place regarding a CEO succession and there should be an announcement soon.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Friday, I had a distinct pleasure to attend a dance recital over at the Mode. And it's probably one of the finest I've ever attended. I'm sure that has nothing to do with my five-year-old granddaughter who was involved in it. But the thing that's so great about something like that in our community is that they have a, a, a dance recital there. There was, the kids, they range in age from five to about 12, I would say. And I think there was about 15 to 20 that participated. There was probably 70 or 80 parents and grandparents and stuff that was there. And the incredible thing about that is that to watch the kids, it is absolutely amazing to watch the thrill and the joy that they have. And what's unique is that none of them were coordinated. They're not, they're not together in their movements and stuff. And that's what makes it so special. And there's always something that stands out as being the most unique, the best. And it was the, the only boy who was in the recital. And I would say he was probably six years of age. He had black pants on, black shirt, red bow tie and red spenders. And he knew that his routine was great. Not only was it so great, at the end, he wouldn't get off the stage. He took many bouts. But one of the joys of being in a small town, even a large town, is to be able to have organizations that put on things like that. And you can attend and you walk away with a real warm and fuzzy feeling. So, it was outstanding.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, Mayor's report, kind of short. I'm going to take just a moment to give a very mini version of my public service announcement. So, most of you know that about a week and a half ago now, I had a heart attack. Didn't know it. I ended up in the ER, no permanent damage. But, you know, we all remember hearing the news about Craig Howard several months ago. They found him, passed away. He was a couple of months older than me. And, you know, what, what happened? Well, he hadn't been feeling well. He hadn't had his follow-up with his doctor yet. And I didn't know it was happening, but I made a pledge to myself because I had him on my mind to call my doctor first thing Tuesday morning because this happened Friday after hours of the long weekend. I felt better as the days went by. I did Memorial Day, felt great, went canoeing on Sunday. But I got to my doctor, he did EKG and sent me to the ER. And where I found out that I had, I'd had a type 2 myocardial infarction, stress-induced cardiomyopathy. So if you are feeling the least bit wonky, and I use that word because the, the cardiology PA agreed with me. He's like, yeah, that's kind of the word for it. Follow up, make the phone call. Better safe than sorry. And I live by myself. Who knows what could have happened? I now have an Apple Watch with fall detection. But scary to find out that something like that happened to you and you didn't realize it, no, until five days later. So follow up with your doctors, do your annual checkups, stay healthy. And I'm glad I have been as healthy as I have been. So, I know it's quite personal, but I want to make sure that nobody makes the same mistake I did. Make the phone call, see your doctor. But in the meantime, County Park ribbon cutting was great. That was the day before. It was a couple of days after that, great attendance. And thanks for going to the Visit Spokane meeting. I obviously was not able to make that. And I can't remember what I've got coming up because we're not hooked up to the internet. I do know we've got the SRTC meeting next week. So, I will wrap it up with that. But please take care of yourself, everybody. City Administrator report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to just cover a couple of reminders of some upcoming events and then we'll go into a couple of briefings. The 2025 City Academy is winding down. We've got a couple of sessions remaining. We are going to be at Fire Station Number Three on Thursday, the 5th. That's this week. And then we're going to wrap up the academy for this year by touring the WM Smart Recycle Center on the 12th of June. If you would like to hear about how either of those organizations operates and partners with the city to deliver services, come out and join us. You don't need to register. Both of these start at 6 o'clock on the respective Thursdays at the locations. Fire Station Number Three this week and the Smart Recycling Center on Thursday, the 12th. And then we will have a graduation ceremony at the next council meeting here to recognize those who have gone through this year's academy. There will be a Transportation Virtual Town Hall on Thursday, June 12th, and that's going to be via Zoom. We've got information about this on our website with the link to join the meeting. And if you have questions about that, you can absolutely reach out to us. If you can't find the information on the website, we'll be happy to direct you to the right place. Further, further down on the calendar, Friday, June 13th, and this is actually a two-day event, starting on Friday, June 13th at the library. It's the Spring Book Sale, always a popular event. This is hosted by the Friends of the Liberty Lake Library. And on Friday, the hours are, and both of these days, the sale is at the library. Friday, the hours are 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And then on Saturday, the hours are 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The very next day, Saturday, June 14th, is the Kiwanis-sponsored Community Yard Sale, always a popular event. This is a citywide event. Maps of participating sellers are available now. And that event starts at 9:00 AM and goes through 5:00 PM on Saturday, the 14th. And then finally, just one last reminder, I believe today is the last day to take advantage of the early bird registration rate. If you want to go, haven't registered yet, want to get the early bird rate, you can still register after today. But the AWC Annual Conference starts on Tuesday, June 24th. So it's still a couple of weeks out in Kennewick. That finishes the list of events. Anyone have any questions about those? All right, moving on. Purpose of this item, the town hall up- Purpose of this item, the Town Hall update, so I'm, I'm going to separate the Town Hall piece of it. The, the event piece of it from the Winter Glow piece of it, because we'll be talking about that later on the agenda in a workshop. But just from a delivery standpoint. We had by count 53 attendees. And that 53 does not include the city staff who are kind of hosting and facilitating. It does include elected officials who are there or board and commission members who are there. So all told, 53 participants. We introduced a piece of technology that is a new feature that is part of the suite that we use. That is provided by Zen City. It is our community engagement portal. And so hats off to David, because we were literally down to the five-minute mark saying, is this going to work? Or, or not? And thankfully, it worked. It was extremely useful. I think it energized the conversation beyond just a normal conversation without that tool being present. And kind of added a new vibe to the, to the environment. So we look forward to incorporating that tool in future public meetings and see what benefit we can glean out of it going forward. And then just from a, a, a personal standpoint, just really appreciated the, the, um, the productive conversation. I think it was, it was very, the, the, there were, there were passionate voices in the room. But people were metered, measured, gave their opinion, listened when others were giving opinions. And so I, I thought from a Town Hall perspective, that's what Town Halls are supposed to be. So I was pleased with the turnout, pleased with the outcome, and I hope you were too.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, excuse me, Mark, I wasn't able to make it in person. We had our last baseball game of the year. I did watch it today on YouTube. I, I agree. I thought it was very well done. The one comment I was also going to make is that I don't think I've ever seen so much advertising for a Town Hall. As I did for this. And I actually had three or four people come up to me and say, oh, I saw a sign on the, uh, sandwich board. Sign at the roundabouts or, or this or that. What, what's going on with that? So I thought that was a really effective way to get people involved, so.
And, and inexpensive. Mayor, it looks like we have another comment.
Yeah, sorry, something was just talking to me and I'm not sure what it was. Side effect maybe? I don't know.
I would like to say in addition to, the program that we set up last night was so effective. Of all the Town Hall meetings I've been to, of all the type of meetings I've had, we're always trying to encourage citizens to give what they really feel. And what happens is that it doesn't happen. Because people may be there who are very positive about why they're there, but there's also individuals that may be not so positive. But they're not going to raise their hand, they're gonna make their comments. The benefit last night for the first time is we had a program that individuals was able to put what they were really thinking about. And it showed, and I think it was the most productive one that I've seen in a long period of time. Especially when we got down to that last question, that if there had been, how do we fund this? I don't see a lot of hands would have been raised, but that information was extremely valuable and I look forward to that as we move forward with that.
Anybody else?
And then the final item that I've got on my report is that we are in the process of launching a new tool. That will allow residents and, and just visitors in general. To, in a much easier, much more user-friendly way, reserve park amenities and other recreation type programs. And so I'm going to ask Mikel to come up and tell you a little bit more about that program in detail. So Mikel, whenever you're, and he may be online.
Yeah, I'm online. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, yeah, so out of the council members, we purchased a software beginning of this year called Civic Rec. And that is a parks and recreation software. And we've been going, staff's been going through training the last about two months for it. Software allow us to do community park shelter reservations and field reservations all online. So community members can do reservations at home at night on the weekends when staff is not around. So those times when you're off work and you're ready to do a reservation, you don't have to call in, you can just do it all online. Do the reservation and process the payment. The software will expedite reservation time for staff and allow us to better track our reservations. It'll have a master calendar for all staff that they can access and, and see all the reservations. Specifically in their parks that they're in charge of. The software will allow community members also to reserve through a mapping system. So each park will have its own map. And will show where the shelter is. They can click on that shelter and then reserve it, which is, I think will be a big benefit. Because we do at Orchard Park get some confusion in which shelter their individuals are renting. And then with that, we can eventually implement that with the community gardens as well. So individuals can know exactly which plot there. They can just click the plot based off the map, which they, that they want to reserve for the year. The software does also allow, if you can see on the, the screen for a Q R code, so we're developing some signage, some custom signage for each park. Where these will be at the shelters and community members can just scan the Q R code. And work a reservation right there or see if the shelter is reserved or available at the timeframe of their, for just the first come, first served use. And then lastly, the software, as we start developing more parks and recreation programming. Will allow us to do recreation planning, recreation registrations. If we ever do any point of sales, it allows that. And it allows us to do volunteer sign-ups and volunteer tracking time. So it's a, it's a great software and we're going to be working on doing a soft launch at the end of this week.
Well, I can imagine that this will also keep some families from coming to blows. We've had some near, near calls over the last years when people think they have something reserved and they don't, and they get very angry with each other. So this is a great way for people to bring up their reservation to prove that they got the spot. And that sounds terrible, but it has happened.
So are there any questions or comments about the rec, I'm sorry, Civic Rec?
About when do we get the signs posted?
Mikel, any timeline on sign posting?
So I just finished designing them end of last week, so I'm going to look to get them hopefully printed in the next, next couple of weeks and then have them installed.
Thank you.
So Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, awesome. Next up, we have Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. I don't see anybody here. Do we have anybody online?
But I have one more I was going to pitch as a city council report. Shout out to Gary Moreno and the Legacy Church for their three V three basketball tournament on Saturday of last week. I believe his registered account, 1,500 people. From nine until I'd say well after three, there were kids shooting hoops throughout the S T C U parking lot. It was a great showing in the community, just a really wonderful day, spring weather and a light breeze. Yeah, and a great, a great service. They do it as a fundraiser and the donations go to Union Gospel Mission.
So having you say, having said that, Deputy Chief, got a question for you.
The Fire versus Police game.
That's what I was going to ask. Did it get played this year and who won? If he doesn't come in, well, no. Oh, no.
I, I wasn't able to watch. I was selling hot dogs, so it's like, it sounded like it was well.
Yeah, I keep growing every year. We'll, we'll, we'll hit him up here real quick. I'm curious. I'm usually there for it, but didn't quite make it.
Dan, I saw that. I didn't know that's what that was.
Oh, my God. Such a little mini hoop test, you know? And it's, it's, it's been growing year after year.
So was there a P D versus Fire Department basketball game and who won?
Well, I would like to say that we put up a good fight. But it didn't turn out really well. Fire Department won that game by just a smidge.
Well, you know.
Well, let's see, about 10 smidges.
But you know, I said last year, you know, in their spare time, when they're not on a call, they get to shoot hoops at the station. You guys don't have that.
Three hours out of the day, so yeah.
We don't have the Fire Department report tonight. You're in luck.
By the time that he's not listening, so that's all good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, Dan. All right, so we are up to General Business Consent Agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve General Business Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving Consent Agenda Items nine, A, B, C, and D, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes six, zero.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve General Business Item 10A, the Placer AI Order Form and License Agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Dunn. Questions or comments?
I'm, I'm just grateful for staff's research into a tool that we're going to make use of. That's good.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody? Questions, comments? All right, not, oh, real quick, Councilmember Ball.
I do have one question. Are we just going to try this out for a year before we commit to ongoing years?
So the way that the order form is structured, the agreement is structured is, it's a 12-years, uh, sorry, a 12-month subscription. With an automatic renewal unless we choose not to renew. And so our intent would be to gain enough value from it to prove its worth and to renew. But we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Okay. All right, so if there's no more comments or questions, all those in favor of approving General Business Action Item I A. Placer AI Order Form and License Agreement, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve General Business Item 10B, the Mission Avenue Revised Local Agency Agreement.
Second. Second from Councilmember Kennedy, all right. Councilmember Ball, you're the one who asked to move this. What's, I assume you've got a question?
Yeah, I do. So in the summary statement, it says this is a minor revision. And I, I looked at this very carefully. What, what was changed? What did we, what's the revision?
I'm going to ask Lisa to come up and answer that.
Yes, so it is truly a very minor. The totals did not change. They just allocated them between the line items a little bit differently. And this was, this was a Washdott mistake. We had, we went through the same thing last year. Washdott approved the form, said this is how you need to fill it out. We submitted it, we approved it. They sent it to headquarters and they said, oop, you need to revise this. Same thing happened this year. Two totally different players, both at headquarters and in the local office. But they're constantly changing seats. And so it's, it's just a challenge that we have. My apologies. But again, we felt it important that we bring back the corrected version to you before the mayor executed it.
Yeah, it just, the numbers look, I just.
The, the bottom line is exactly the same.
All right, okay. Thank you, Lisa.
All right, any other questions, comments on this one? Right, not hearing any. Those in favor of approving General Business Action Item B, Mission Avenue Revised Local Agency Agreement, please say aye. Hey, any opposed? Motion passes six, zero. All right, workshops. Moving right along. First is a Facility Master Plan Update Workshop.
And as the team is coming up to the podium, Mayor, I'll do a quick introduction. Just to set the scene here and remind the council and, and the audience kind of how we got here. And as I go through this very brief timeline, please don't read anything into this timeline. There's been a lot of time and a lot of things that have happened between when we first started talking about this and now. And I just want to kind of set the stage so that everybody recalls those past conversations. And, and why tonight we're bringing back an update with some additional information that will be important for you to, to see. And so going back to September of, of 2024. We formally kicked off the master facility planning effort early in the month. And then if you all remember, in the middle of the month, on the 17th. Was when the city council voted to table the further consideration of the library design and construction project. And these are, these are interrelated. They're not directly connected, but they're interrelated. And so the facility master planning was, was ongoing as that decision was made. And so we, we pivoted a bit as we were considering the city facilities. And how we were going to manage growth through the planning effort. Fast forward to February 4th of 2025. And if you'll remember, the, the council wanted to schedule a special meeting that ended up happening on February 25th. To reimagine the library design and construction project at Town Square. And so shortly after that, the next week in fact, or the next meeting. We had the initial Facility Master Plan Report that we brought to you with our partners from B C R A. Minus the Police Department options. There still needed to be some fine tuning of those options. We've done that. Those are included in tonight's report. And at that meeting also, the city council requested appraisals for City Hall, Town Square, and the Legacy Church Building. Through some unfortunate circumstances, we ended up, we were going down the road with a vendor. We had to switch vendors. It took a little bit longer to get the appraisals than we initially anticipated, but those have been distributed. In fact, last week, I sent out those appraisal reports to you on all three of those properties. And so then looking forward to February 25th was when we actually had the meeting. To reimagine the library and community center project. And shortly after that, the council authorized staff to develop three options for that project at Town Square. We are currently in the process of coming up and finalizing those options. And the plan right now is to bring you those options and present those to you at the July 15th meeting. And so that brings us to present day. And so what we want to do tonight is revisit the original master facilities plan report. With the addition of the P D information and talk specifically through some recommendations that we would like for you to consider. In light of the fact that we're also going to be bringing back the options for the library community center project on July 15th. And with that, I will turn it over to Ben to start the report. Ben?
Thanks. Mark, Evan, can you get a slide to the content slides? I'm just going to break down kind of what we're going to talk about tonight. So first off, we'll kind of recap what we talked about back in February, but we have provided some additional detail, kind of broken down square footage deficits, things like that. By facility, and then get just kind of some updated information in there. And obviously, we're going to talk about the Police Department a little more detail than we did last time. The sequencing concepts are going to look very similar to the one they did in February, but we've incorporated the Police Department facilities into that. Kind of sequence, so Nikki will go over those. And the sequences themselves won't look that much different. But we provide a little bit more information, so you can kind of see the needs for each department, each facility. And then kind of, and then we'll provide, you know, some additional options of the Police Department. We have Chief Simmons online to talk a little bit about the Police Department programming. We met with him a few more times since February to kind of talk about his space, needs to make sure those are fully fleshed out. Is to, to capture all of his current and future needs within the department. And then we've got some staff recommendations, and then we'll talk about next steps, which really is, gets us to July, basically six weeks from now, where we'll talk about the library. Mark and I really wanted to have this kind of intermediate update for the Facility Master Plan, so when we talk in July about Town Square, you have a full picture. It's fairly fresh in your minds since we haven't talked about this since February. Next slide, please. All right, so this looks a little bit different. There's a lot of information on here, but I just want you to hone in on kind of the, the title, City Hall, Police Department, Public Works Library. It shows the current square footage. And it talks about all the things we don't have and what we need. But then at the bottom in blue, blue text talks about where our deficits are. So in City Hall, we basically have a 50% deficit on, on our knees. That includes Parks, Parks and Rec, things like that. The only thing it doesn't include is the, the Operations Building, because this is really to look at admin space. I think the Parks Master Plan is going to look a little bit more about operational facilities for parks. The Police Department is really, maybe a little bit smaller deficit, about 15%. And I'm, if you want to do public math, those members are estimated, so might be off a little bit. Public Works, we've already really outgrown the Public Works facility, and we're also in a trailer. And we just had our first porta potty delivered a couple of weeks ago, so we're running out of room out there already. We'll grow a little bit more as, as the city gets bigger, but we do need approximately 1,000 square feet to replace the trailer a little bit bigger. So that's, that's really our deficit. And then obviously, you're pretty familiar with the library's deficit. That gets us to 1,800, 18,000 square feet if we were to add 8,400. That doesn't include the community space that we've talked about.
Mayor? The, the square footage deficits, are those according to our analysis? Are those according to someone else's analysis? Where do those numbers come from?
Those, those came from the Facility Master Plan analysis between staff as well as B C R A. So they, they, it's, they gathered all that information for us and kind of projected out when we're at Build Out.
Thank you. Thank you.
So overall, uh, so we're, we're I think we've got about forty thousand square feet if my math adds up. We've got a deficit of about twenty one thousand, so we're about thirty three percent behind what we need to, need to be based on for these four facilities. Which house five departments, six departments. All right, so that is basically, so this is our, you're gonna see these numbers again in the sequencing concepts that Nikki's gonna go over with you. And so we've basically taken these numbers as our start, then we try to, okay, how can we get to where that complete deficit is covered, uh, with either within our existing facilities or new foot, new footprint such as Town Square or any other options. All right, so I think the next slide, uh, we're, I think we're gonna have Chief Simmons come on and talk a little bit about his programming. And this was, this was information we fleshed out with him a few weeks ago. And this is what we kind of used to figure out the police department's space deficit.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Members of the council, sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties with my laptop here. So, yeah, at our, at our last meeting, we discussed the needs of the, of the P D, uh, the future needs of the P D and started to examine it from, um, where we will be at build out. And so when we started talking, talking about staffing, you know, I had to examine this, uh, from several different viewpoints. First of all, um, of course, everyone knows that, uh, most, uh, city governments like to look at officers per thousand um, and where we are there. But there were two other things that I really wanted to focus on. And that is number one, making sure that we have sufficient staffing to address the workload that we potentially could be presented. Um, and number two, from, uh, looking at our program, like our, our party-based programming, like our investigative needs and some other needs. So caseload, so the difference between workload and caseload is workload can include proactive and reactive, whereas caseload is generally reactive. So what needs are we gonna need from an investigative standpoint for our detectives and our crime analyst, um, evidentiary, storage needs and those types of things? So looked at this from several different, uh, ways. We figured that we will need approximately forty to forty five officers, five to eight support staff, and that five to eight support staff includes the growth in things like, uh, record, uh, request, public records requests. And again, our evidentiary needs for evidentiary storage, um, our, um, data needs as far as, um, being able to, uh, provide an evidence-based approach to everything that we're doing. So things like our crime analyst and potentially having to add something like another crime analyst. And also looking at, uh, hopefully achieving accreditation here in the future and needing, needing, excuse me, a full-time accreditation manager. So th- those are some of the, 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 uh, the, uh, thoughts that are put into the quantity of officers and support staff. Currently, we have about three hundred and fifty, uh, square, I mean, currently have about three hundred and fifty square foot per person. And we share a lot of space. And so, um, you know, looking at what we're gonna need, one of the biggest things that I wanted to look at are some of the deficiencies in space that we have now, such as training, record storage and those types of things. So a lot of thought gone into this. Currently, we're one point seven nine officers per thousand, at, uh, we're anticipating two point one eight if we get to that forty to forty five officers per thousand threshold. The national average right now is two point, is around two point four per thou, per thousand. And keep in mind, again, Washington, we're fifty first in the nation for officers per thousand behind the District of Columbia. And so, of course, um, everyone knows the, uh, uh, you know, the, the, addressing that at the, at this past legislative session with some, uh, legislation, uh, trying to address, um, those officers per thousand needs. And of course, we'll have to figure out what we need at our, at our level. Now, I, I, I want to, um, again, emphasize the fact that sometimes, uh, we, we've been really focusing on the fact that our geographical boundaries don't stop crime. And with us being sandwiched between two metropolitan areas, growing metropolitan areas, um, that have post falls and the valley, we have to consider that as well. Uh, we have to consider things like our daytime population versus our, uh, actual population. And then, of course, our commercial growth and every, and all those other things. We do share some space right now with scope. There's been talk with, uh, the Department of Corrections in the, in the past about possibly having a, a satellite office for the Department of Corrections and their, their staff out to, uh, do some supervisory, um, duties out at the police station. There hasn't been a real big push, but it keeps coming up, it keeps coming up. And I have a future that, I mean, I have a, uh, idea in the future that, that, that that potentially could come to fruition. Um, and then we recently had some talks with the Washington State Patrol about a satellite office, uh, for their commercial vehicle officer, which is, um, it, it's kinda gone away now, but, um, they have one, what they call a C V O four, which is a supervisory, um, position here in Washington or Eastern Washington for the first time. Sounds like they wanna expand that program and talking to their lieutenant, it sounded like the, there could be potential for, or the potential for revisiting that in the future. So again, uh, in the future, we may have, uh, the opportunity to partner with, uh, some other entities, uh, within our community for our public safety needs. Our, some of the, uh, existing capabilities, again, that, that we're having issues with right now, training space is a big one. We generally have, um, gone elsewhere for things like defensive tactics. We've been using, uh, the high school gym for defensive tactics and some other training needs, just because we don't have the space at the police department. With accreditation, we've been trying to figure out what we're gonna do for our secure record storage and making sure that, um, we have a sufficient amount of space of that, especially in the future. Adequate evidence storage, um, we, of course, you know, we've been working on that and continue to work on that. And also, uh, our parking area, we, we're starting to lose with the expansion of our evidence area, we're starting to lose some of that space for internal parking for our officers, which, um, especially the secure parking, which is an officer safety, a great thing for officer safety with the officers being able to pull into the, the Sally Port there and, and enter and exit their vehicles safely. But also, uh, as we get other equipment, um, like our M wrap, we're having trouble trying to figure out where we're gonna put that. And so we're looking at some parking, um, solutions for that to include some covered parking, um, since officers are having to park outside now instead of inside, to make sure that their vehicles are, uh, always ready and they're always prepared to go when they're inside writing reports or training or anything like that, especially during inclement weather. So that's, that's some of the, the things that we need, that we're looking at. Again, um, looking at this from, uh, our P B B, uh, standpoint with, uh, with all of the programs that we have there and also from a workload and caseload standpoint.
We got a quick, we got a question for you, Chief.
Chief, and, and maybe this is a question for Ben too. I'm trying to square the, the, this slide with the last slide. The, the square footage numbers that we saw on the last slide, uh, that are needed, are those needed at build out or are those needed today?
So the square footage you saw on the last slide was a build out.
Okay.
And, and I think, I believe, Chief, the, that, that includes the staff numbers he's got there as well. So he's got, I think, up to fifty three. So.
Do you have any idea where we are in terms of what we need today?
Not exactly. We could probably let you know. I mean, and I think one of the things that you'll see with and not to get to, to, uh, get to in Nikki's presentation, a lot of the police department stuff can be phased. I mean, we've got a lot of renovation in the building. Uh, some of it's dependent on where the library goes, obviously, but a lot of that stuff we can do over time. We don't necessarily have to bite one big chunk out of it. So I think that's what we gotta take a look at a little further. What you'll see, uh, from Nikki here in a minute is full build out, total cost for everything.
Got it.
Thank you. Just wanna keep that.
Got a question from Councilmember Ball.
I don't know if this is for the chief or Ben, but on the corrections part of it, so are you suggesting we're gonna have like a small jail here?
No, so community corrections, community corrections is what I was referring to as far as the Department of Corrections. And community corrections just means supervision. And so if we have, and we have people under supervision, um, in our community. And so instead of those people having to go into the valley or all the way downtown to check in with their parole officer, they'll be able to do it within their own community. And that includes surrounding community, Otis Orchards and some of the valley and in our, um, south of, uh, the lake there. And so, um, we're talking about from a, uh, supervision standpoint, people who are under supervision after being released from incarceration.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's more office space, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the chief, uh, you talk about shared office space possibly with the Washington State Patrol, would they be paying rent for that space?
That's something that, um, we discussed. I know myself and the lieutenant, uh, discussed that. And so that would be completely up to the council in whatever agreement, um, that, that we have. And the same thing with the Department of Corrections. Um, that would have to be, of course, we'd enter a, uh, enter a local agreement with those agencies or some M O U and, and kinda figure out, you know, what that, what that would look like. But that would, we would have to determine that at the time of, of the agreement.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, next up, welcome.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Uh, thank you, council members and Mayor. Glad that you're here. Hope for your speedy recovery. Has Mark mentioned, my name is Nikki Pulldoris with B C R A. We've been working closely alongside your various departments on the master planning feasibility study. You may recall that we presented some of these sequencing concepts back at the February eighteenth council meeting. At that time, the police expansion was not yet fully developed. So today, that will be the primary focus.
Nikki, can you move your mic down just a little bit?
Yes, sorry for the
Thank you.
tall people coming after me.
It's all Ben's fault.
In the first option here, uh, we begin with the library relocating to the Legacy Church Building. So this move supports in the departmental growth and allows for expanding, uh, programming space for the library staff and to support the community. The additional square footage gained by this relocation is shown on the slide here. Any surplus or deficiency in the square footages are highlighted there in red, aligning with the slide that Ben talked, um, earlier on the department programming needs. The deficits, again, shown in red, the surplus is shown in black there, or yes, shown in black. It is worth noting that there is a thirty six hundred square foot deficit based on the needs assessment that was previously completed for the library to accommodate for the future growth of your city. By relocating the Library Lake Library, the current library space then becomes available for City Hall in the municipal, municipal department functions. It is important to note this, the City Hall Library, uh, relocations are independent, are interdependent and meet the space needs for all departments there. So that's where you see the plus in between the City Hall and the parks. Excuse me. The Parks Department would then vacate, vacate its current, uh, facility and relocate to the existing City Hall building, shown there, maintaining adjacency to their equipment and shop space. Destiny Ruin Option One, reprogramming your existing City Hall here would also allow for an enlarged council chambers and the addition of flexible or rentable community space. The existing police department, uh, which we will detail in the following slides, would require a new building addition, which is, it's a little hard to see, it's that little penage there off to the side to support providing space for staff growth and administrative needs.
That's a little bit
Yes.
Grateful.
Yes, it's the little box off to the side. The estimated, uh, total cost for this sequence of building improvements is that eighteen point three you see down there at the bottom with an anticipated, uh, implementation timeline of seven point five years. Next slide, please. In option two, the sequencing begins with the City Hall and council chambers relocating to the now vacated, uh, Legacy Church Building. This existing building can accommodate for the spatial needs of multiple, uh, library-like departments and includes a council chambers there, which you see in blue, designed to seat up to ninety guests. The site accommodates for special needs of all the library-like departments, which is where we've, um, worked with them on the programming needs. The Parks Department, again, would move into the current City Hall building while being able to, again, maintain close proximity to their equipment and shop space. So in this version, um, I do wanna say that it includes a six thousand, six hundred square foot surplus that you see noted there, which does provide flexibility for additional community programming and future departmental expansion. So in this option, the library would then move to a new facility within the Town Square parcel, which we will talk with you on a future council, uh, meeting about here. And then finally, the existing police department would have the opportunity to expand into the now vacated, uh, library building and would support the necessary growth for training, staffing, operations, as the chief discussed earlier. So the estimated total cost for this sequence is twenty eight point seven with an anticipated duration of seven point five years. Next slide. So here we are gonna show a more detailed version of option one for the police department programming. This option utilizes much of the existing square footage and reconfigures the layout to create, uh, more open workstations for officers and staff. The proposed building addition supports more cubicles and offices, but I do need to stress that that does not address all the department programming deficiencies, such has the need for a larger tactical area, enhanced training, shared office spaces for partnerships with scope, department corrections, Washington State Patrol, or expanded storage for records and evidence. The conceptual cost, um, includes both the building addition and the renovation of the existing facility. Next slide. Thank you. Here, in option two, the police department would expand into the adjacent existing library space and would not include a new building addition. The expansion into the existing library would provide an opportunity for additional offices, administrative areas, enhanced training, tactical space, greatly improved storage for records and evidence, and opens up the possibility of adding, um, municipal court that could be in close, close proximity to this department. So the conceptual cost includes the remodel of both the existing library and the police department. And with that, I will turn it over to Ben.
Any questions? Doesn't look like it. Thanks.
Slide, Evan. All right, so I, I think it's pretty obvious which option i- is, is the one that staff recommends. Option two basically meets all the future requirements for the city departments. Uh, I didn't mention the municipal court when I was doing my first slide, but that's something that's been discussed. Someday, we may need it. Uh, that's something that would fit in the existing library if the police department did expand, and that can be a joint municipal court slash police building. The library is big enough, uh, which council's asked us to look at separately, so it meets that requirement. Uh, allows parks to stay here and, and co-locate with golf, and it also gives parks a little bit more room. Uh, we're standing in it right now. Just in case, uh, depending on what COA we pick for Town Square, that space could be here, uh, that community flux space could, could happen here or could be part of that as well, if the city needs it. Uh, I think the Town Square idea of the library is great. I mean, it gives us an arts and culture community zone, really. I mean, we've talked a lot about winter glow. I don't know if we've talked about a winter glow type event being there. I mean, that's where we have our main event with our farmer's market. It gets everybody there next to all the restaurants, all that other stuff. So there's, there's synergy there. And then it allows the police department to really expand, actually. When you look at those numbers between, uh, the expansion into the existing parking lot, uh, which is an ideal, the cost per square foot, I think is double. So it's a, it's a larger number in option two for the police department. But you're getting, I think, almost three times as much space that you could be used for the municipal court or other, other city programs, depending on what we need in the future. And we don't have to do that right away either. I mean, that number, that eight point seven million dollar number in option two includes a municipal court and all that other, all those other things, as well, as, as well as a pretty large renovation to the, in existing police department spaces. So when you see that twenty eight point seven number, um, it's not something that we would need to fund right away. And then, and then we put seven point five years on each, each COA. That's really just, that clock stopped, that clock can stop really any time. Uh, depending on what situation the city's in financially, so. One of the other things that we wanted to add, uh, cause we have talked about appraisals, I think Mark brought this up a little bit, uh, we did receive the appraisal. one of the other things that we wanted to add, because we have talked about appraisals, I think Mark brought this up a little bit, we did receive the appraisal, and I think you all have seen copies of that. So the Legacy Church Building was not nearly as much as we thought it would be. I think it's about seventy-five grand more than we paid for the building.
Approximately.
So we want to take that into account as well. I think that the keeping Legacy Church and using it as a city asset is definitely the preferred option by staff.
And if I can add one bit to that synopsis that's been provided on the recommendation, number one, to say we're not asking for council to make a decision tonight. We're not expecting that specifically because we have more information to bring you on July fifteenth. Evan, if you can back up to the first option to slide, I want to say it was the third in the deck. It's the one that had right there. So another advantage of of this option, regardless of what happens with the library is that the first two pieces of this that relate to City Hall and parks and community space solves the City Hall problem long term. I hesitate to say forever because you can never predict forever, but it solves the problem long term. And nothing else has to happen for those two things to occur, that no other domino has to fall. The library could stay where it is if council chose to make that decision, and the police department could would stay where it is with some other possible remedies for for growth for police, including a potential add-on of of the clip-on that Nikki described earlier. And so from a logistics standpoint, from a need standpoint, from a how do we use the space that we have now to leverage our future growth patterns, we believe option two makes the most sense, regardless of what happens with the future discussion about the Town Square project.
Comments, questions? Get Mounts, we're evolving, then Mayor Protem.
I I was just going to ask, can you email all of us a copy of, I mean, this presentation so that we?
Yeah, Rochelle, Rochelle, can you do that real quick? Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. So there are, my mind's going in about a thousand different directions right now. I guess I I want to start with just a couple of comments and then a couple of questions as well. The the first is, I think option one is a non-starter. And the reason why relates to the Legacy Church Building. Can we go back to the, thank you, on option one, reloading the library there? I think we've all come to realize, or at least I hope we've come to realize, that that building is a too small. We didn't get the grant for it, and we understand that you know, when we were discussing this at the end of last year, we were using the assumption that the building was worth a heck of a lot more than it was. And so that's, I I think option one is kind of wiped off the 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 screen here because of those reasons. On option two, if we can go back to option two, I guess my my concern remains the same about the Legacy Church Building because as we've just seen from the appraisals that were sent out, the building is essentially worth about what we paid for it several years ago. And in my opinion, a building that is not increasing in value in this market is decreasing in value. My concern on this one is, okay, let's say we go ahead and we put City Hall slash Council Chambers or a portion of City Hall slash Council Chambers in the Legacy Church Building. We're still spending five million dollars on a building that's only worth two point one. That gives me a little bit of heartburn, the same, for the same reason that I had heartburn last year when we were discussing that. That's my my comment. I have other comments as well, but I guess my my main question to staff is these plans are obviously long-term plans, seven and a half years, maybe even longer than that. What is the priority? What do we need to have done tomorrow? Or tomorrow is not literally tomorrow, but right away. Because I feel like, you know, we're being tugged in a bunch of different directions here on public safety. And I know you you said that public safety could be kind of phased in. Or is it City Hall expansion so that we have more room for the staff? Is it the library? Is it the parks and our communities, having extra parks and community space at City Hall? I I'm trying to get an idea from city staff on what the priority is. What what is, if you had to choose one of these things to do tomorrow, what would they, what would it be?
I would do City Hall. That's the greatest need, and it's the closest alligator to the boat. We're already bursting at the seams.
We're at an office.
And it's only going to get worse.
So if I can add a little bit, I agree with with Ben's answer. If if we go back to the very, very beginning of this conversation and not to muddy the waters too much, the 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 staff moved in a direction that that council through its approvals of certain things indicated it wanted to go. And so we we purchased the building for the express purpose of developing a library. We approved two consecutive CFP with amounts to develop a library project in the current year. And so that was, that was what we were executing. When it became clear that may not be the best option, we started pivoting and through the Facilities Master Plan in partnership with B C R A, started looking to see, well, what what could be another use for that facility? And to use all of the bullet points that you saw on the recommendation slide to include the fact that there is no dependency currently on something that has to occur first, that is a no-brainer, top priority in in staff's eyes.
I've got a quick question to follow up. So to Mayor Protem's point about, you know, two point one seven five million dollar building, it's not worth that much more now. How much of that proposed five point five million dollar renovation? What would that add in value to? I know it's a, it would be a major swag, but obviously some of those renovations would be permanent. And the energy code updates, all those kind of electrical updates. So what value out of that five million would remain really with the with the building? Because obviously, some of the other improvements would be internal that would, you know, could be ripped out by the next person. That'd be a really, that would be a question I'd like to have answered, understanding it's a major swag at this point.
Yeah, that that would be something I would rely on Turner and Townsend here to provide us some insight on. But, you know, I I would say the the first anecdotal answer to that would be we would look at that facility as being a thirty-year City Hall. And so regardless of the value that it added, we're 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 using that value in returning through services to the public. Obviously, we're going to be reconfiguring a a building that is currently being used as a church into a office building. And so you would, you would by definition be changing some of the configurations, adding furniture that doesn't currently exist, as the mayor indicated, major upgrades with perspective energy code changes, things like that. We could get you a more precise number in terms of valuation. Let us do a little work on that, and we can bring that number back probably on July fifteenth.
Super, thank you.
Can I piggyback on that real quick? I was just going to say, I mean, to me, unless it's at least somewhat close to seven million, we all need to be aware of that because we would be sinking seven million dollars, seven point one, whatever the cost was that we paid for it, two point one, I think it was, or two point one nine or something, we'd be sinking that amount of money in. So, you know, in order for it to make sense money-wise, it would have to be at least close to that. But I understand what you're saying about, you know, it's a long-term asset, obviously, and it could grow. I am a little bit surprised that it hasn't grown at all. I mean, we talked about what, fifty thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand dollars? I, when I saw that number, I couldn't believe it. I thought it would be a lot more than that.
I go, that's economically driven too.
Yeah.
What did you say? I didn't hear that.
I got a lot, it's market. I mean, that's that's probably why it hasn't.
Immersive real estate isn't a big dip.
Yeah, and we had done done this a year and a half ago, probably would have been more. Yeah, Councilmember Ball.
So I have a question. So Ben, you said City Hall. So if if we move City Hall into the Legacy Building, where then where's the library going to go? I mean?
In this example, it's a new building.
Yeah, that's the Town Square concept. Now, when that happens is up for debate, I think.
It has, but we kind of, it has to happen at the same time.
No, no, it doesn't because Legacy Building will be vacated when Legacy moves out, and that's when you start the renovations to put City Hall and Council Chambers in there. The library doesn't have to go anywhere.
So it'll it'll basically stay where it is until we have a solution.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Anybody else? Nobody? Councilmember Dunn.
I guess regarding the value of thirteen two ninety-seven, the address, the former Legacy Church, the value of the city being able to orderly deliver its services for the next thirty years is well in excess of the sum of these two values that we've discussed. So I don't think trying to do arithmetic to assert what a sum should be is logical. Thanks.
All right, anybody else? If not, we'll have Ben go on to the next.
Slide, I think at the end, the next slide, Evan, that's be our last one. All right, so we'll be back here in six weeks to talk about what we've been working on on the library at the Town Squares. We've been meeting with Jandy about once every three or four weeks. We've got another one with her, I think, in another ten days, putting that concept together, making sure it gels with what you were looking for. So we'll be up to talk to you about that, and then we'll be back on the nineteenth of August, really to give the final presentation and to discuss valuations and things like that.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Can I add one more scenario to consider for our, I guess it would be for this seven fifteen building or a seven fifteen presentation, is what would, what would the plan be if this council decided to sell that building?
Yeah, we can look at that. I think it's going to be more than five million dollars.
Say it again.
Be more than five million dollars if we've got to go build a new building or find a building for City Hall.
Okay.
We can take a look at that.
Um, I I just would like to have that as one of the the options that's available for us to look at in the event that we decide nothing's going to work there and we want to just get out of it.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Kennedy.
Comment, food food for thought that I I certainly agree with Mayor Protem because it, you know, if it's worth two million dollars, is it just found, put five million into it? But also realize, we have an evaluation on this building right here. And we're going to have to put a couple of million dollars into this. So we can't take the same scenario that we shouldn't do that. You know, we're not in this business of making money on our properties because we're not selling. The only one that would probably be on the market to have a possibility of doing anything would be Legacy or Town Square.
It's worth the most.
If that scenario has actually come up in the past, is if that was sold, the amount of money could be, could pay private cash for a lot of stuff. So I just want to throw it out for food for thought.
Real quick, we go back to that option two, though, the move to of City Hall to Legacy Building and renovation here. Put my glasses back on, came to what, five point five?
Uh, yeah, yep, so five million for City Hall. And and like, once again, it's same as the police department, there's a lot of phasing we can take here. I mean, this this technically you could use the space for community space over a weekend because it just.
So the total between those two is less than we were talking about putting into the library renovation to move into Legacy. Got it.
One more quick question. When does our lease with Legacy end?
So when when the former lease expired, which was on April the thirtieth, we entered into a six-month lease with then a month a month in perpetuity after that with a thirty-day notice of termination. So it's a six.
On both sides?
On both sides.
Okay.
Yes, so it's a, it's a six-month extension, so that would take it to October thirtieth, and then from there forward, it would be a month a month.
And do we have any, I'm sorry, do we have any indication of of if we went forward with moving City Hall over there, how quickly we could make that? Is it a six-month project? Is it a one-year project?
Who is it the entire renovation?
Right, so if we decided to to move that over to Legacy?
Oh, with the renovation's going to take you two years.
Two years?
If we've got it completely renovated, yes, with design and construction.
Two years?
For City Hall?
To move, to renovate, completely renovate Legacy Church for a City Hall, the way we've got it laid out, yeah, two years. I mean, we're not, we haven't even done anything. We've got to design the thing. That takes six months and, yeah.
It is these days. All right, Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you, Mayor. I I'm not sure who might know this. Has there ever been any talk of putting out a long-term lease on on Town Square Park to to a private developer and and looking to collect revenue from that and and possibly sales tax, depending on what the business is or?
In one of the scenarios that we had discussed, we we had talked about the possibility of looking for a development partner to do something on that northmost plot that fronts Apple Way, assuming that some of the other portion would be taken up for a library, community center. We we haven't done any serious work to look at what those possibilities are, but that's certainly a viable alternative. We would just have to develop that concept into something that we could bring you back and talk actual terms.
Yeah, I'm just curious what type of revenue we could potentially get from from a long-term lease that could fund some of these other projects perhaps.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Okay, I do want to add in two thousand fifteen, when there was committees looking at moving forward with the two thousand sixteen vote on that, that was looked into. And the idea was to take the north side of that property, and several developers were contacting to see if they had an interest of doing something there with the idea that, let's say, we would own the land, and then they turn around and develop it, and they pay a lease on that the same way as it happens a lot with convenience stores. Somebody owns a land, they build a building on there, but they never own that. You know, it's the properties, that could be very, it was looked at and did have strong possibilities.
So the Town Square concept that we've been working on does not include that north parcel, basically, from the parking lot of Town Square to Apple. So we haven't, we're not touching that.
Yeah, and I I remember one of the first phone calls I got in twenty twenty-one was from Chase Bank, which is now, we know, public record going into the old Pita Pit, but they were looking to buy about an acre of that land there at Town Square to put up, and we talked about, and, you know, not something at the time, we were ready to to parcel off because we didn't have our master plan. So I think at some point, there might be people interested in it. We're just not at that point, but definitely on the radar. Making sure, anybody else before we go back? Councilmember Van Norman, you've been very quiet. Anything you want to add before you go back?
Not a matter of notes, a matter of being able to talk.
Okay, got it. Mayor Protem.
Did you want to say something? Um, I I guess, I guess my thought here, as as we get these numbers here tonight, we we get the staff recommendation, we get the potential timeline of two years, is why wait? I mean, why not start the process now of engaging the firm to put together a proposal to churn the Legacy Church Building into the city offices and have that ready to go as soon as the lease expires on October thirty-first or whatever, the the end of October. And then that way, we can get going on it, because if it is really going to take two years, you know, we don't want to be busting at the seams any longer than we need to be. And if that is the recommendation of staff as the top priority, I guess my thought would be, let's go on it, let's get going. And at least come up with a plan so that when the lease expires, we can sign off on it and go. Because obviously, we're not going to be able to do all these things all at once. Everything, we're going to have to take apart every single part of it. We just don't have the cash flow to do it all at once. But if we can try to bite off chunks, I would be in favor of moving forward as quickly as we can.
I will, I will note the the new Legacy Church site has not seen a lot of action lately, so.
So what we would need in order to start that process is authorization to issue another work order number three under the Turner and Townsend Harry contract. And so we're we're not going to do that tonight, but we can bring that forward i- i- at the next council meeting if that's the council's direction.
Or is there any objections to that? I'll just put it that way. Any objection? I'm not seeing any.
So we're bringing it forward, okay.
Does someone need to make a motion?
No, no, okay. Not, we'll get to that when, that's why, that's why I asked it the way I did.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Sometimes that's a little simpler. So now we have consensus from the council to bring back the work order, which then will be discussed and voted on.
The other thing that does is give us the opportunity to have Councilmember Kurtz here as well when we discuss it.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Anything else? You've been busy.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. All right, next up, Lisa, you've had a moment or two to rest. Back to the Transportation Improvement Plan Workshop.
So this is going to be quick and easy. Hopefully relatively painless.
You've got two minutes, Lisa.
As I learned long ago, um, this is best provided for you in a large format.
So I can scribble on it this way.
So next slide, please. Um, so uh, we're, this is a workshop on our six year Transportation Improvement Plan, RCW thirty five seventy seven point zero one zero requires the city to adopt one annually by June thirtieth. Projects must be in the city's tip to be eligible for state and federal funding. We do have a, the SEPA review going on concurrently. It will be completed by June thirteenth. And we will be holding a public hearing and adoption and bringing back a resolution for adoption on June seventeenth. So let me share with you a little bit about what's before you, um, the draft for this year. Next slide, please. So it's based almost completely on the, the adopted twenty twenty five, twenty thirty capital facilities plan as it relates to transportation and projects by others related to transportation. There are two projects where we have had some cost, um, updates. One is the Mission Avenue frontage improvements, which we did get a grant for. Um, and we are, but we've honed in on the cost for that. Um, and the Mission Avenue overlay. Um, we have the engineer's opinion of probable costs, so that's what's reflected in here. And the network analysis and the network, the cost of the network analysis is actually less. We had, it was a total of a hundred and twenty five thousand, but it was spread over twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. The whole project's going to be completed in twenty twenty five. And those were really the only changes to what you already have adopted. So next slide, please.
Quick question, Lisa, um, on TP seven, the smart signal control, I thought that was moving out because the county wasn't ready.
Um, ooh, good catch, Mayor. Good catch indeed.
Forty one thousand, but it's something.
Yeah, so that's, that is moving out. And so, so I will, I'll go back and look at what the final was on that and I will make that correction. Yes, ma'am.
So the ones, the numbers in red then are the ones that have changed.
Yes.
Okay, and so the, um, uh, which one is it? Oh, TP five. West City Limits, okay, to, uh, that will be next year's.
Yes, so, so we have money in this year's budget for the design of it. The construction is next year.
Okay.
But again, as we dug into, um, the design detail for the grant application because of the, the constraints related to utilities and stormwater, et cetera. We were kind of squeezed in, so we had to be creative in our design and it's going to cost us a little bit more to get those frontage improvements in the sidewalk and the swales, et cetera.
This is when we're getting the million thirty thousand from.
Yes. What we had budgeted when you look at the grant money, but as you know, we always program the full cost in the tip and in the capital facilities plan.
So we're getting a grant for that one too.
For, for the frontage improvements, yes.
TP five. Yeah, Senator Christian called, called me one day and said, you have a project I can get funded for you? I'm tired of giving my money to the valley. So.
And what's great about it is it's a safe route to school project. So it's really, it's
Oh, yeah, that's.
Exciting that we're finally going to get this section taken care of.
Yeah, it's gnarly.
Um, so anyhow, so, so again, I don't really expect you to read this. Uh, it just really just wanted to, to show you that, uh, what it is, we've talked about the numbers that have changed. For the final tip, I will be making the correction that the mayor noted. I will be, um, making all the numbers black and I will include the, um, I will include the project descriptions in that final document. Um, we do have a beautiful map of the projects for y'all to look at. So thank you, Megan Edwards, our GIS person. And, um, next slide, please. Next slide, please. Nothing's changed in the project by others, by the way. There's the map. And so really the, I've already told you the next steps, we will be bringing it back to the next meeting with the resolution and the changes that have been noted. Do you have any questions for me?
I go ahead. Thank you for the map. You know I love maps.
I know you do. We, we actually did get the pedestrian and points of interest map updated, so we will have eleven by seventeen maps at Farmer's Market for those.
Hey, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Winter Glow Workshop.
Um, that is going to be, uh, me, Mayor, and there's, uh, essentially a, a change in focus for this workshop between what we had planned and what we want to bring to you. Um, and I've got, uh, Jen and her team on the ready to provide some additional context and answer questions as necessary, but between the town hall last night and today, I've been able to, uh, talk with the, with the Winter Glow Board and reach a tentative agreement for the board to retain production of Winter Glow for this season. Um, and work on a transition to the city for the following season. We need to work out some details. That's why I'm calling it tentative, number one, number two, because we need to bring back an MOU for you to authorize that uh, and enshrine that agreement. But they want to continue to be involved, but as you heard, their, their volunteer force is dwindling. They need some help. So part of that agreement is going to be our staff supporting that effort this year in some way. We haven't figured out the details of that way yet. That'll be part of what we need to do going forward. But part of what this does is stops that countdown clock that was ticking towards double zero on June sixteenth uh, for that requested purchase of those items that we've talked about. Um, and it gives us additional time to plan what's next versus the potential for no event to occur this year. And so we believe, uh, that this is the win win scenario. It's the best, uh, outcome that we could achieve. Uh, but we still need to do some work to fine tune what an agreement looks like so that we, so that both parties can feel comfortable about the transition that would now occur over two years instead of one. And so, um, I'm open for any questions. Uh, the team again is, is available to answer any operational questions that you may want to ask, but, um, those are the most recent developments and, uh, so with that.
First up, Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This agreement you're referring to, my assumption is going to be is that we're looking at an agreement for just this year. This is not an agreement we're looking at to purchase.
Right, the agreement that I'm referring to is, is in ensuring that the event happens this year by way of Winter Glow, the Winter Glow Foundation producing it as they have with some support, some labor support from the city that we'll have to define. Um, and then a, a transition to city production um, in the following year, whether that does or does not include uh, inventory is something that we're going to have to work through and, and agree on.
Well, what I'm, excuse, what I'm hearing here is two things. One, we'll make an agreement for them to continue on this year, but I'm also hearing that in this agreement, we'll also put on is how we will take this over.
Later.
Correct.
That's going to take council discussion on how we're going that direction.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to just clarify, re-clarify what you asked just for Mike. So we're talking one agreement, not agreement A to continue for this year and then a follow up agreement on the following years in the equipment.
No, it would be a single agreement that would ensure that this year's event happens as it always has, and then whatever happens beyond that would be included in the same agreement.
Gotcha, okay. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Ball.
So a couple of thoughts. First of all, I appreciate the, uh, trying to come to some sort of agreement so that the the rug isn't pulled out from underneath us, especially with all the citizens who enjoy going to Winter Glow. My concern is that, um, this sets us up to where it, it puts a burden on our staff next year. And I know that you're, you're trying to come up with something that wouldn't necessarily do that. But my hesitation all along has been not necessarily the cost of purchasing all of the equipment, although I did have a hesitation on that. It was what it was going to do to our staff. Uh, and the, the, basically the requirement that we would have to hire at least one new person, perhaps several new people, perhaps part time workers to get it all done. And so regardless of whether the agreement is half, we take or half that they finish it this year and then half that we take it over next year. My concern remains the same that we're going to be right back in the same position a year from now or when we discuss the budget in terms of how we're going to pay for the people who are going to be setting it up and how Jen and her staff are going to have to operate next year to do that. So, um, so I guess that's more of a comment than a question, but, um, but that was, that was my hesitation all along was the, the burden it puts on all of you.
And, and we agree, and I'll let Jen address the, the burden on staff. We agree, um, with your sentiment. I, I think where this gives us some additional, uh, maneuvering room is to make those decisions without feeling like we're under the gun for this year's event.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly correct. We're not having to be hurried to make a decision now. But to your point, we also have to assume, like we discussed last night, assume the worst or most. And still even with a transition, we don't know what that is going to be.
Right. So when the MOU comes back.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's going to have to say, I mean, it's not going to have to say, but we're going to have to have an understanding as a council that we're going to have to increase our staffing next year to make this happen.
Or, or potentially even this year.
Yeah.
Because we don't know what the voluntary world is going to provide us in twenty twenty five. And we didn't budget for, um, staffing to do that this year.
And, and, and I'll say the, the MOU doesn't need to get into that depth. The, the, really the MOU is going to secure this year. Um, and then will give us the flexibility to beyond this year uh, figure out what makes the most sense for us, whether that is to continue at all uh, in some different form or as it's been happening, in which case we'll be able to go through a full budget development cycle and, and make those considerations.
I think we had Councilmember Ball next and I think, did you ever hand up to you, then Spencer, then?
Okay, so, so my question, Mark, with this, um, new offer or whatever you want to call it from the Winter Glow Foundation, do they want us to purchase the twenty five thousand dollars worth of, um, displays this, this calendar year?
So that will not be part of the MOU principally because the council has already authorized, uh, a, a payment, uh, out of, um, tourism funds.
Right.
To cover the event, which they're still eligible to collect as a reimbursement for producing the event.
The twenty five thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay. So, okay, so we couldn't use that to purchase the stuff if we decided to do that? No. The twenty five thousand.
Potentially, uh, potentially, yes, but that, that isn't part of what we would propose in this agreement. The, the purchase would not be part of this agreement.
Be a next year thing.
Correct. If we chose to continue at all, we could then have that discussion downstream.
Okay, and so then, um, i- if we were to go with this MOU, would there be a need for her to hire one more FTE? Like she, like you discussed last night or?
I mean, that's an unknown right now. It, it would depend, our, I mean, I, and I haven't talked with, with Winter Glow, this is kind of late breaking news. Would, you know, would they, would they for the most part supply all the same people this next season that they have been and use our city staff at a very minimum? Really, it's just park maintenance for us is what our, our input has been. Or are they, are we going to be more involved this year? I don't know the detail of what that looks like.
The one major. Yeah, we, yeah, we have, we know one main key player will not be involved.
So the, the commitment that we have, the verbal commitment, commitment that we have, um, and and obviously something that we have to get codified through an agreement is, is that the, the Winter Glow Foundation is going to produce the event this year as it always has. The agreement that we've made verbally that needs to be codified is we're going to support you with some, uh, staff support. We, whatever that ends up being, we have to sit down and hammer that out. Um, for two reasons, one, so that we make sure the event happens. Um, and two, so that if we theoretically choose to continue producing it in some way that we have knowledge built up among existing staff. Whether we end up having to hire someone or not, we've got people who then are say, trained, uh, in, in producing that event.
Have Councilmember Spencer next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I'll just echo what Mark said. I think the biggest difference between what we were potentially looking at prior to this late breaking news is uh, we were essentially, if we were to agree to take it on, have to figure out how to put it together. Yes, there were some folks that said they would, you know, take on certain displays and things like that, but we wouldn't have somebody basically coaching our staff on, on how to put the event together. So, uh, I, I mean, that is a positive thing. Uh, I guess my, um, my other question is whether there's been any conversations regarding what is, what is the plan B? If the city says we're, we just, this isn't a core function of government and we're just not going to do it, do we, do we have any idea what Winter Glow's plan B is?
Winter Glow's, uh, I think plan A and B is to be out of the light display uh, event in Liberty Lake. But they don't, the discussion today was they don't want to leave us in a lurch. And so we, we've been able to reach an tentative agreement that this, uh, two year transition gives us the ability to produce the event this year and then figure out how we're either going to take it over and continue producing it uh, or not, or do something different. That, that gives us a full budget development cycle to figure that out.
Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I appreciate your characterization of a win win specifically. This enables the community to, uh, have the event that they've come to appreciate. And then for the city staff to, in a low pressure environment, discover the mechanics of what makes it happen. Um, I'm very grateful for the energy and the action to be able to coordinate on this agreement. Uh, the agreement will be very important about what the total impact is on, um, city staff, time and energy and action. Um, and I think through the experience, I like the gesture of saying we will learn what we don't know and learn, um, how to or how not to do this in the future. So, um, that I think is an opportunity for everybody in the community. So, thanks.
Councilmember Van Norman, then, then we'll get back to the second round.
Just checking to see how many people volunteered for last night. If, if anybody volunteered.
Yes, I, I don't, I didn't count them, but it seemed like about a third of the folks that signed in checked the yes box.
So you know that the interest is there. The next question I would have would be, is there any chance with some of the other businesses out there that would like to take a crack at decorating Liberty Lake?
I, I would say that's a somewhat separate conversation. I think it's always open for any, uh, potential a- additional, uh, celebratory lighting, um, event or period to, uh, sort of take shape. Um, I don't know that that would be directly tied to this. It could be, but we've not specifically talked about that, um, piece of it. Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Just thinking outside the box.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ball.
So last night, um, it was, I think it was Mr. Riley said that they want to keep their name, you know, if we take it over. So, um, if they are going to be producing it this year or helping us figure out how it goes forward, do we have to change the name already or?
So this year it would be called the Winter Glow Spectacular, assuming. So this year it would be called the Winter Glow Spectacular, assuming we reach a formal agreement.
Okay.
And then beyond that, we would need to figure out how to brand it.
Right, right. Okay.
That's probably least of our worries.
Well, then is the name.
Yeah, but you know, I want, it's something I wanted to be clear on.
Yeah, oh, no, I get, yeah. Okay, if you both had your hands up at the same time, who wants to go first?
Just a real quick clarifying question. Is the MOU going to have in it the understanding on staffing for this year?
Yes.
Okay, so it will say Liberty Lake, for example, City of Liberty Lake is going to provide to, I'm throwing out an example here, to full time employees or two part time employees to help manage implementation this year.
Yes, whatever that number ends up being, and we both uh during the discussion fully acknowledged that we've got to sit down, both parties have to sit down and figure out what that is, but yes, it would include that number.
Okay, would it also include? I assume it wouldn't include anything for next year, or or correct me if I'm wrong, because next year, basically, it becomes ours as part of this memorandum?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Spencer, then Councilmember Kennedy.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm curious um whether we enter into this MOU, whether this allows us to formally solicit agreements with local businesses and organizations who perhaps may want to uh get become formally involved with manning certain displays or whatever. Currently, we don't really have that ability because we don't have any ownership. Would this give us some sort of ability to go out as a city and say, hey, STCU, do you want to send a team, you know, XYZ Church, do you want to send a team to own this display? So that that we could have some some things put into place so that we don't have to present to the public the next time we have, you know, as a town hall that, hey, we've got, we've got 90% of the things locked down. We just need a couple more volunteers or or whatever.
Yeah, I would, I would say that if through the uh discussion process that council has, if if council chose chose to take over the event in any uh fashion, we would incorporate that as part of our strategy uh to help produce it going forward.
But I I guess just to follow up, so could we start doing that this year prior to production? And perhaps even include some some agreements with local organizations to help produce this this year and and going forward possibly?
Based on what was discussed last night, I assume the answer is yes, because they're they're already accepting corporate donations and sponsorship. So I presume the answer is yes, but that's something we can certainly uh get more details on.
Councilmember Kennedy.
What I'm hearing is two options here now. One, I'm very pleased. I'm pleased with the idea that they will continue on for this year. I'm extremely concerned that what I'm hearing is that this agreement is going to include that we take it over next year. I am very concerned about that, that this council has to put the time and effort into having discussions of that. We have to have some good discussions. Is this the direction we really want to go? My concern is that old saying is once a camel's nose is in the tent, he's there. And what I heard last night is that Jen did an excellent job of trying to answer a question with the saying, would we staff be able to do this? And she very honestly says, well, we're not sure. But also, what did we spend an hour or so pri- previously in this meeting? What are we going to do with Town Square? What are we going to do with City Hall? Those are priorities right now, in my opinion, but it costs millions of dollars. Now, a comment was made last night from a citizen, which I have to agree with. Person made a comment and said the question was, what's our budget? It was like $24 million. The comment was, well, I think we can find a hundred and some thousand dollars out of that to be able to support this. I could agree with that, except we're $18 million upside down over the next six years. Those are hard numbers, folks. Kyle, is that correct?
Thirteen point five.
Thirteen point five million dollars that we've obligated, that we don't have, that we have to come up with. And now what I'm hearing is that we're going to take staff time to start getting corporate sponsors and stuff. I think that's anti productive. Until this council actually has a conversation, is this something that we want? Now, do the citizens want it? Quite a few of them, yes. I would love to see it, but what at what cost are we going to do this? Is this a priority over the library? This is priority over City Hall? I don't think so. I'm in favor that we have an agreement with him for this year, but in no circumstance, and we're going to have and should have an agreement that we're going to assume that that means we're going to take it over next year without we ever discussed it.
Mark.
I'm concerned about that.
Sorry, Mike, I apologize. Um, so Mark, it's not necessarily an obligation that we are going to do it in 26. It's that Winter Glow will not be involved in 26. Is that a simpler?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not.
Allow me to ask the question, then what does that mean? Who would take it over?
Well, so maybe take over was the wrong choice of phrase. The the agreement would be that the the Winter Glow Foundation would produce the event this year as it has been produced in the past with some support that we still have to define from city staff. And then for next year's event, the the city would be responsible for producing whatever event occurred. Council would obvious, yes, council would have to then decide whether that's no event, the event as it's always been produced, or some variation of that. But the agreement would not govern what that is in 2026.
Oh, Sean's got a comment.
I think the issue that's coming up is this agreement is not going to compel the city to do anything in 2026.
Correct.
Okay.
Got you. Um. Go ahead.
Just one quick follow up, Mark. And again, we're all, we're all talking about an agreement that no one has seen or we don't have, so it's kind of hard to ask specific questions, but is is it your intent in the agreement that it uh it will address something regarding the equipment? So in other words, that is, to my understanding, that is a decision that's going to have to be made, even if we're able to push it off, that's a decision that's going to have to be made sooner rather than later. So is the is the MOU uh going to address that? Or is it just going to say after January 1st? It, nobody knows what happens.
So it it's um, it's not my intention to include an agreement about the transfer of ownership of equipment in the MOU.
Okay. So then, so then after this season, it would still remain with the Winter Glow Foundation?
Unless post uh agreement or post season, we chose to
Right.
do something different and and make a separate offer.
But if no decision's been made by then, then it just stays with them and then we're right back to square one where we are right now.
Yes, um, however, it gives us a a full budget season to go through that discussion. Yes.
All right. Any other further questions? Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, well, I'll just point out to to that point. Currently, uh, we've budgeted $25,000 to go to the organization if they produce the event, right?
Yes.
And and uh if if we were to roll back a day ago, uh, when we thought they weren't going to be involved in any way, they wouldn't have received $25,000. So it it would be curious to see whether we could make it a wash at that point. If we do produce it this year with our help, you know, perhaps something to that effect.
Yeah, we're, we're like turning our cards around here at the, um, but but yes, I agree 100%.
Fair for Tim.
But just in in reality, the 25 is now churning into, according to this MOU, is a 25 with an asterisk because it's going to also include staff time.
Yeah, I mean, yes, the if if you want to look at it that way, sure. Um, the the staff time would be call it a donation uh a above and beyond the 25 that's been already authorized. Again, we're gonna have to come, we're we're gonna have to nail down those details to understand what that number is. But yes, you could consider that an additional donation. And um, if you remember the presentation, looking back over the five years, there's been, you know, there's been some level of uh donation from the city to Winter Glow outside of the tourism dollars that has occurred in each of those five years. So that's not all that unusual. What the number is, is what we're going to have to get to through the agreement.
Sure. Yeah, I guess my my only point is that I I don't know that I would necess, I I've always supported, you know, donating to to the Winter Glow event. But now knowing that we might have to provide some staff time, I don't know that I would necessarily still like a $25,000 donation um as opposed to 20 or 15 or whatever, equivalent to whatever staff time we'd be putting in as well. So that's just, I don't know, my part.
Has that already been approved through the through the tourism?
It it has been authorized. I'm not sure the procedure, Kyle, you may need to help out here if there's any precedent for changing that once it's been authorized.
So so there isn't. Um, so Lodging Tax Advisory Committee authorized the expense of the eventual expense of these funds on a reimbursement basis. So we are provided receipts for activities related to Winter Glow. Historically, if they've purchased lights or anything ahead of time, they have been able to ask for reimbursement. If they're doing any service based activities, they are kind of under the gun in December to get that information to us after that has occurred. And so, and these are, these are, these are pass through funds uh to characterize them, I guess, more appropriately, so.
Thank you. And um, Councilmember Kennedy, I think I had your, you had your hand back up.
Uh, no, no.
Good?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything further? It sounds like we will look to hear further from you, Mark, on what that agreement's going to look like.
Yeah, it'll, it'll take us some time to uh go through that and and get something that we're both comfortable with before we bring it back to you. But uh, what it what it does do is it takes that June 16th deadline out of play. So uh, we would like to have this back to you on the next council meeting. Whether that can occur or not, we'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you. Great work on last, hail hail Mary at the end there. All right, uh, we are up to council comments. Anybody have any additional council comments before we um get to future agenda items later? All right, not hearing any. No public hearings or appeals, no resolutions. We are up to ordinances. First read for 990A.
Ordinance number 90A, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number 90, establishing a minimum public park maintenance standard.
Do we have a motion?
Um, Mayor, I wanted to move to suspend the rules and move immediately to second read of ordinance number 90A.
All right, do we have a second to, thank you, we have a uh motion and a second to suspend the rules to move directly to the second read of um this ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope, motion passes 6-0.
Does that have to be read again?
Yeah.
Ordinance number 90A, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number 90, establishing a minimum public park maintenance standard.
Motion to um move ordinance number, or the repeal of ordinance number 98.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Is any questions or discussions? On, this is just part of our cleanup process. I'll get there. Uh, go ahead.
Just to clarify, you said the repeal of 98, so we're we're approving ordinance number 98, which repeals 90.
I beg your pardon, I need to restate that. Um, I'll make a motion to repeal ordinance number 90. Which is
Actually, but but that's a negative, that's a negative motion, so you need to
Just approve ordinance 98.
So, motion restated to approve ordinance 98, which was seconded. All right, any discussion before I go to council, to public comments? None? Okay, are there any public comments on the re- on the repeal of 90? There's somebody, anybody here in council chambers, step on up, anybody online, and the comment would only be on this ordinance. Going once, going twice, anybody online? All right. Okay, so no public comments, uh, no further discussion from the council. Those in favor of approving ordinance 90A, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. Go ahead.
Ordinance number 105A, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing number ordinance number 105, establishing a section 125 fund for the purpose of implementing a cafeteria plan authorized under section 125 of the Internal Revenue Code 1986 as amended.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, move immediately to second read of ordinance number 105A.
Second.
And we have multiple seconds there. We'll give that one to Councilmember Spencer. All those in favor of suspending the rules uh to move to second read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, second read.
Ordinance number 105A, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing number 105, establishing a section 125 fund for the purpose of implementing a cafeteria plan authorized under section 125 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended.
All right, now we're back to any public comments on ordinance?
First. Motion to pass, uh, a motion to approve ordinance number 105A.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spencer, thank you. All right, um, time for public comment on ordinance 105A. Anybody in chambers or online like to comment on this ordinance? Not hearing any? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Um, council, those in favor of approving ordinance 105A, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0.
Okay, ordinance number 249A, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number 249, establishing the Harvard Road Bridge Widening Fund and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, move immediately to second read ordinance uh 249A.
Second.
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Um, those in favor of um move of approving, spending the rules to move to second read, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0, second read, please.
Ordinance number 249A, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number 249, establishing the Harvard Road Bridge Widening Fund and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 249A.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kennedy. All right, are there any public comments on ordinance 249A, either in chambers or online? Nope, not seeing any. All right, um, see council, those in favor of approving ordinance 249A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you for your work. Um, no, there are no emergency ordinances, upcoming agenda items. You've got the matrix on your table. We'll run through this real quick. Um, Kyle, any, anything you want to note on the tiff and lift? Nothing? I mean, you don't have to, but. Okay.
So this wouldn't be uh related to any reimbursement per se. Uh, representatives from the hub did want to present a potential MOU for consideration in relation to an eventual uh reimbursement request. So this would be kind of related to how that mechanism would play out, should we eventually decide to do that.
Shouldn't be a very long discussion. Um, residential secondhand smoke, are we going to be ready for that?
That's the plan, yes.
Okay, all right. So that is the follow up discussion. Um, Town Square Library Community Center Master Plan, we know that's coming. And actually, we've got July 15th and July 1st on those kind of flip flop greenhouse gas sub element, at least you're on schedule for that. Um, public safety sales tax, and then we've got some further going further. Are there, there any? Is there any workshops that I'm missing that anybody needs to, would like to propose we have going once, going twice? Or you know what, we're going to be in budget season, so. Yep, all right. So we are done with uh upcoming agenda items. Are there any further citizen comments? Again, if you're here in chambers, take a yellow piece of paper. If not, if there's somebody online, please let our meeting host know in chat. Not hearing any public comments. Um, we have no executive session, so there's no further business for the council. We will go ahead and adjourn. Thanks, everybody.